All right, I would love to welcome everybody to our October 3rd City Council meeting. It is officially called to order and we'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. It's wonderful to have everybody here today. I love it. Let's go ahead. We're going to have our invocation by Nelson Hoover from the Skyline Menonet Church, and then we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's all please rise.
I might just take a minute if I could, just to thank you guys for what you do. Thank you for your time commitment to our community. And if you would, if you would just bow your heads with me, I'll ask the Father's blessing on your meeting. Father, thank you so much for these men and women. Thank you for their unselfish way of giving back to the community by serving. And Father, tonight, as they look at the agenda items that are there, I pray that the votes that are cast, those votes that are taken, deciding votes, that they would be done with pure motives, that nothing would be done out of fear, of results, or nothing would be done out of selfishness. But Father, give them heavenly wisdom that would bless our community in Canyon City here. Thank you for, again, their serving. I pray that you would be with their families tonight as they make this sacrifice in their absence. Would you watch over them? Would you protect them? And Lord, the decisions that are made tonight also, they're going to have implications on the future. Maybe not even this generation, but future generations. So would you lead them? Watch over them? Would you protect them physically, emotionally, and spiritually? In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Do we have any council member announcements? Councilmember Tracy?
Mayor, you might be better at giving this update than I am, but I attended part of the Build for Zero State Team Meeting in Canyon City this afternoon, which was really what the part I attended was. Just an excellent workshop to really look at priorities and how to keep moving forward in achieving zero homelessness in Fremont County. So feel free to say much more about that.
Yeah, no, it was a great task force. We had some of the national leaders from Community Solutions helping to guide us. They have some funding streams. DOL just came out with some new funding streams. So a lot of us were brainstorming our next steps on how to utilize those opportunities and the best ways to reach functional zero for chronic homelessness, which would be just getting 20 more people into housing to reach that functional zero. So we have two zeros for Fremont County. And the passion's there, and it was really great to refocus on those needs. And appreciate that Councilmember Tracy, Schmisher, and Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick were there as well. So those great representation and teamwork by the city elected officials. So thank you all. I also had an opportunity to meet with the Advisory Council for RE One Schools, and so that was really, really good, too. Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to remind our council members, we do have a KRLN interview this Wednesday at 8:30. I will be there. If any of you want to join me, be glad to have you. We do have a URA meeting coming up Wednesday at 5:00. We're going to be talking about our various grant programs or grant programs that we're going to be transferring from the city to the URA potentially, including the VASAD Grant Program, the Life Safety Grant Program, and the Building System Grant Program. And then our General Government Meeting after that at 6 o'clock here in these chambers. We'll hear from Fremont County Tourism. And about the Build for Zero, the one statistic that I came away with is that we have achieved functional zero for homeless veterans here in this county. And that means we're one out of 14 counties or areas in the country that have achieved that, nationwide. 14. And if we can expand that or build on that to get to functional zero for all of our homeless population, that we will be one of four counties nationwide to do that.
Well, that would be for chronic homelessness.
Chronic homelessness.
So they do different groups at a time. First veterans, next chronic homelessness, which would be those who have been homeless for at least a year or more. And then it kind of opens up to the whole gamut. So you have a lot of newcomers that come in and out of town.
Right.
The next level. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to the City Police Department and Parks Department. Star Point had their largest fundraiser of the year this past weekend, the Rim to Rim Royal Gorge Races. It was also their largest attendance ever at that event with 498 registered runners. And the Parks Department and the Police Department both supported it, and it was very, very much appreciated. So thank you very much to the city for their support of that local nonprofit. I also just wanted to remind folks that this Friday is our first Friday, rededication of Temple Canyon Park, which will be held in Macon Plaza, starting at 4:30 with some crafts and games, and then a speaker from the Ute.
The South Ute. So it'll be a speaker and dancers and musicians.
Followed by a movie at the Carnegie Library. So just encourage everybody to come out and learn a little bit more about our indigenous history and help us rededicate Temple Canyon Park.
Okay, seeing no more announcements, we're going to move on to you. Oh, yes, Councilmember Worthington.
Maybe it's not lit up.
You're not lit up.
Well, anyway, I just wanted to give a shout out to our Police Department again, because I got a nice compliment from a woman last week saying that she was so thrilled at how Veterans Park has been cleaned up, quote-unquote, but is just really thrilled at the way things are going and wanted to pass that on. So I thought I would.
It's nice to hear those, because I actually get a lot of emails about other areas that aren't so good. But Police Department, too, helped participate in a pretty awesome halftime show for the high schools homecoming game. It was super fun. A particular shout out to Officer St. Louis, he's the SRO officer who danced with the cheer team. If you haven't seen it on Facebook, you've got to go on and see it. And they also passed out their new, like, collector's cards.
Trading cards.
Trading cards, and it looked like that was really well received by the kids. So that's really fun. Really happy and appreciate all that they're doing to engage the community. All right, Ryan, let's see. What do we have? Consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 6A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on September 19th, the Vision Committee meeting on September 21st, and the special meeting September 8th, which was the VA clinic meeting in Florence, September 14th, which was the CML Dinner, and September 19th, which was an executive session. 6B is to receive and file the list of bills, and that is probably the shortest consent agenda that I have had since I've been here.
This is really weird. I'm not complaining. Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I do have a question slash comment in regard to 6B. As I'm sure I've said before a time or two, I kind of keep my eye on the Black Hills Energy Bill that the city pays. And I traded emails with Administrator Stevens and Tammy Nordike, our finance official. It just was such a high bill. I mean, this is for roughly, I believe, a two-week period of over $31,000 paid to Black Hills for electricity for the city. And I just, I find that I just feel that we have to mention again that we're paying very high electricity costs in this community, and so residents and businesses in the community are paying those high costs. And then we're paying them again through our taxes to support the city, school district, and other entities. We're paying those high electricity bills in multiple ways. And some might say that, well, when we had the franchise fee, it helped to pay or offset part of that high cost. But my response to that is, it's the residents and businesses that pay the franchise fee. It's remitted to the city when we have one for electricity, remitted by the company, but it's paid by those who are paying electric bills. So it's concerning. When I look back for the last two or three, two-week periods, rather, you know, this one, over $31,000, the previous one, $16,580, the one before that, $16,310, and that's kind of what we're seeing every two weeks. And so it just concerns me. And it also concerns me when some think that, well, the franchise fee would solve that. Many fiscal conservatives say a fee is a tax, and it's a tax on the people. We're already, those who pay their electric bills are already paying a 3% sales tax on those bills to the city. And I used to point that out when we still had the 3% franchise fee. That's a pretty stiff tax or fee and tax for the community to pay. So I just wanted to point that out again. And then, of course, say that, you know, the city's Energy Advisory Committee is still working diligently on this issue. We don't know if we're ever going to have a different option or what that might look like, but we're still working on that, meeting twice a month. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan considering the consent agenda? Councilmember Smith?
Is there any other questions? Because I was just going to make a motion.
Yeah, go for it.
All right. Madam Mayor and council, I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Is it an emotion and a second? Any discussion? Call of vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council and staff. Ryan, our administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council has the written report in your council packets. A couple of additional items that didn't make it into the administrator report. Tammy, our Finance Director, is going to be working on scheduling the community agency funding meetings. Those that were appointed, I believe, at the beginning of the year are Ms. Tracy, Ms. Schmisher, the mayor, and Ms. Worthington. Are there any others who want to participate in community agency funding deliberations?
I would like to participate.
Sure. Tammy, we'll be sending out some prospective dates over the next couple of weeks. Couple updates. New Method Laundry. We're waiting on two final reports. One regarding testing of the monitoring wells, and the other is the structural report regarding the building itself. So once we have those two reports, we'll have a better idea of timing and where to move forward with that particular building and the related issues regarding to the dry cleaning chemicals. It is possible we may look at, you know, the acquisition, moving from the city to the urban renewal. So there's some discussions that Rick and I need to have regarding that and the benefits of which entity actually takes ownership. So there's some moving pieces there, but we do have that preliminary report on the monitoring wells and just waiting for that final report. And then Skyline Steel, we're looking at, you know, StanTech or Brownfield Consultants as part of the Brownfield Grant, is looking at the abatements and hiring a contractor to do the asbestos abatement. And they're moving forward as well with, there's some small soil contamination that they need to look at, and we'll be putting out a bid for that as well. So starting to see some movement on both of those items. Happy to take any questions.
I just wanted to make sure that we give a shout out for the Apex Mountain Biking Race. Also got some really nice compliments from the company that puts on the race and tons of compliments from the riders themselves. It was, sounds like it was the most popular stage out of three stages from one of the most prestigious mountain biking races in the country. And so shout out to Parks and to Rick, who was a big part of that, too.
Yeah, we had a great input from the Parks Department, and Rick Harmon volunteered for the race and actually led the mountain bikers out at the starting gates, so.
Yeah, fun for him.
Should we ask where he finished?
I think I saw in the email that he and Malah both volunteered their times to help. He was a worker bee.
Just wanted to make sure people stayed on the course.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just had a question, and I asked this by email, but I thought it might be good to kind of provide that information at the public meeting. My question was in regard to the very last item on the administrator's report, just asking for a little more detail about the special project at Third and Main and the Third Street bumpouts and the Clock Tower Plaza design, just kind of a little more detail, if Administrator Stevens could say what that is.
Sure. Yeah, so that project is currently being delayed due to CDOT. We have several different funding sources that are going into that, and CDOT, the CDOT money has been awarded to the city, but we still have to work through the IGA. And right now, CDOT has a backlog for some of that paperwork. So they're telling us it'll probably be about four months before they work through the IGA on their end. So that is part of that delay. We're looking at whether or not we can separate those projects, but, you know, part of what we were trying to do was get economies of scale by bundling everything together and try and get more bang for a buck doing it that way. So we're evaluating all of that right now.
Thanks.
I think just keeping an eye on if there's a point for this $20,000, which in the grand scheme isn't that much money for a grant, the bundling and working with CDOT and IGAs. Sometimes it might just get too complicated to be worth that much brain drain for $20,000. We need to maybe keep our minds open as the process.
Yeah, so the $20,000 is coming from DOLA, and we're matching $20,000. The other CDOT money is what?
Yeah, well, that's a million, right? So I mean, that's a different story. Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question about something not in the administrator's report. And that is, and a comment about it also. Do we have any update on LOVES?
LOVES is, actually, their plans are sitting upstairs. They're ready to be picked up. They have received some final comments from CDOT after the fact. So they're trying to resolve those issues with CDOT. But, you know, as far as the city goes, and I believe we actually have a meeting tomorrow with Rob Brown to discuss some of those CDOT issues, but as far as the city approvals, we've gone through those and we're just waiting on them.
And I'd like to say, I did attend a meeting with various representatives of the city and LOVES, including Three Rocks Engineering, who's doing the CDOT work for them. And CDOT is truly an agency out of control. They came in after the comment period expired with comments. That was kind of a Christmas wish list. That's not what a responsible agency does. And it appears to be pretty individualized comments as opposed to agency-type comments. It makes it very difficult for regulated entities to have to deal with such a horrendous regulatory structure. And LOVES is doing their best, and we will do everything, the city, from my perspective. I will do everything that I can to help them. But when you're up against CDOT, sometimes the deck is stacked against you.
I think that we can say that everyone at the city, including the staff, have been trying our best to be good business partners for LOVES and wish them the best. And if we need to go up to bat, we're going to go up to bat.
Yeah, and, you know, some of the feedback from LOVES regarding the city part of the process is that they were very happy with how quickly they were able to move through our process. And I think from start to end, it took about six to seven months. In other communities, they see that same process go anywhere from 12 to 18 months, sometimes longer.
Which is really, I don't even want to say this publicly, but I had a contractor say to me that, I mean, the gossip on the streets amongst the contractors is that Canyon City was one of the worst cities that LOVES has ever had to deal with. And I just hope that that messaging can be out there that we really went through this process and, you know, tried to do our best, and I hope that LOVES can help spread that word. I mean, with the exception of CDOT and their ridiculous Christmas list. I mean, we're here to help them as much as we can.
Councilmember Schmisher?
You're good? Okay. Well, let's go to discussion for 8A, and this is the backwash drain line project. Ryan?
I'll turn it over to our Water Superintendent, Travis Payne, for his report.
Hello. So I have some video coming. You can just kind of keep an eye on that while I'm talking. It's just going to show some of the condition of the inside pipe that we videoed. So you can see in some of these sections where there's some pretty serious root intrusion. And this has kind of led to our decision-making to replace more of the pipe rather than where the failure was. So on June 15th, one of our employees was doing some weed eating, and they found a pretty large sinkhole. And so we went to investigate, and it was adjacent to our drain line that we use for our backwashes. And it was determined that that drain line had suffered a partial failure. So what was kind of happening was every time we do a backwash, it would flood it out, but it wouldn't flood it to the point where it would actually hit the street. It would flood enough that it would soak everything, and then there was so much water rushing past it, it would suck it back through. So it'd pull material back into the pipe, so that's what created the sinkhole instead of it flooding, which was kind of a blessing and a curse. You know, we weren't aware of it for a certain amount of time. We don't know when it actually happened. But if it had have completely failed, then we would have been in much, much more horrible shape. So you can kind of see just more root intrusion as it's going through. We contacted four contractors, local contractors. Trenchless was the only one that could really do the work. So with it being about 17 feet deep, that takes some pretty serious excavating equipment to reach down that far. Additionally, it was right next to the haul road for TSAC, so we would have had to shut down their road in order to dig down that far. Just to dig down 17 feet makes a really big hole, so we would have had to tear up their road for a certain amount of time. So you can see here, this was a partial fix, so that's actually separated pipe. So that was just a matter of time before that would have failed. So after consulting with management, we determined that it was an emergency purchase, and so we went ahead and gave Trenchless the go-ahead to start their work. They estimated roughly $150,000 to $200,000, and that actual estimate wasn't even to replace all the pipe that we replaced. That was estimated to fix the actual failure. And so that was, you know, it's a lot of money, but it's also 17 feet deep. And as per the memo, there's a 30-inch water main, concrete water main, right next to it, and we're talking like five feet away from it. So you're digging 17 feet deep. There's a lot of large riprap above that. You had a sinkhole. I mean, there was a lot, a lot going on there that they would have had to contend with. So they started their work. We started doing some videoing, as you're seeing here, to actually see what we're dealing with. And this is from a manhole that was about 480 feet from the point of failure. And so the more we kind of saw, the more we thought, well, you know, they had a $20,000 mobilization cost, you know, if we're going to be paying that $20,000 to get them there, I think it'd be worth doing the work the proper way, the right, you know, the first time, rather than have them come back and do additional work. So we bought some pipe, and we fixed the top section of pipe down to, you'll see that there is a large taproot that came through that we just couldn't get a camera past. And so we decided to fix down to that taproot, and so then we can video the rest of the pipe. We videoed the rest of the pipe. There was a section in there that looked pretty good, and it was an extreme slope. And so we decided not to replace that, because it would have really added to the expense of the project. And it really wasn't an emergency to replace, you know, what was decent pipe at an extreme slope. So there is still a section out there that's not quite replaced yet. So on July 25th, that's when we did the second video, sorry. On August 16th, we were able to run a successful backwash. That's that taproot that they couldn't get past. It was an elm tree that was right above it that had gone all the way down. And, yeah, you can see, I mean, once you have that kind of stuff in a clay pipe, I don't know if anybody has ever had clay pipe in their house, you know, it just continues to fail, and it's going to do a complete failure. So then we went ahead and replaced the bottom section. So Trenchless came in at, I think it was $143,000 for their work, and the final cost of their project was $181,000. So the difference there was us buying the pipe. We had to buy a bunch of restraints, because at that kind of angle, when you're using PVC pipe, it becomes too much weight on itself, because it goes into a bell end, and it can over-bell itself and create a break. So you have to use mechanical restraints to kind of stop it from doing that. So you can see that was when we did a second. That nice pipe in there is what it all is now. So that's kind of a reference there. So they had given us, you know, they basically said what they thought it was going to be about 20 days, and they said $6,500 a day. On the memo, it said $6,000 a day, and that was a typo by me. What I did was, Trenchless, back in the early 2000s, they were the company that put in our 42-inch water main that goes off east side of the water treatment plant hill. So I went back and I looked at what they charged us back then, and it was the $6,000 a day. So it was in the neighborhood, certainly over a 20-year period of being understandable to have a little bit of a cost increase. So they weren't raking us over the coals, you know. It was well within what we all thought it should have been. So you can see up here is, yeah, that's another pretty significant break. That's not even a failure. So that's a break that was discovered. The other thing that I evaluated was sliplining the whole thing. So then that's just kind of putting a sock in, and then you hit it with steam, and it cures. So once you see the break, you'll see why we couldn't slipline that, and we would have had to dig down and fix that anyways. And then there was a worry about that it would constrict the pipe too much. The inside diameter of the slipline was smaller than the 12-inch PVC that we replaced it with. So you can see, that's not the failure either. We haven't even got to it yet. That's a partial cave-in that we found. And so that's why we didn't slipline it, but we did evaluate that option. And so we're getting down to it, pretty much, here. That's just about underneath the haul road right there. And so we did replace that section underneath the haul road. But what we did was, instead of digging down the 17 feet down to the bottom of the manhole, we dug down about six feet, and we made it a drop manhole, so that it came in at six feet and then drops the water down. And so that was the savings that I outlined, like the five days of savings and excavation, because they didn't have to dig that giant hole. They were able to just, here's the break coming up right there. And so that was a really significant cost savings there. So you can see that is the failure there.
And the sinkhole was above that?
Correct. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, the last paragraph there. So to pay for this, the Filter Media Replacement Project was slated for this year for $200,000 due to a lot of price increases for hauling all that material. We decided to push that project, so we had that $200,000 in the budget still. We decided to use that money for this project then. So we didn't have to dip in any kind of reserves for it. So that's kind of nice.
And the Filter Media Project has been rolled over. It's in your proposed budget for 2023.
Yep.
All right, we have a question first from Councilmember Tracy, then Mayor Pro-Tim Hamrick.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And thanks, Travis, for this detail. It's really helpful to see that level of detail. Could you, just for those of us who aren't 100% clear, can you say a little bit more about what a backwash drain line is? Where does it run from and to? And then I guess the second part of my question is if there's anything that we need to kind of think, looking out farther, that we can anticipate on dealing with this.
So when we say backwash, it's basically- So, um, when we, when we say backwash, it's basically cleaning a filter. A filter's been put through its, its hundred hours and it needs to be cleaned.
And these are filters at the water treatment plant itself?
Yes, yes, on top of the, on top of the hill there. That, that takes about sixty thousand gallons roughly to do, um, with a max flow of about four thousand gallons per minute. So it, it's quite a lot of water. Um, so where that goes is it goes through some backwash, um, retaining ponds at the top of the hill. And then it goes down this drain line and it ends up back into what we call a pond, the big pond at the bottom. And so basically it recycles that water. We don't want to actually drain that water anywhere. We want to reuse that water. So it goes back into that pond and then we bring it back up after it's kind of all settled out. And we take the clarified water and we bring it back up. So this, this drain line then is for our backwashes to move from the top of the hill down to, uh, our a pond.
And how often does that get run, that system flushing?
So in the summertime, we can have several a day.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we can have several a day. In the wintertime, you know, we can have a couple a week. It just kind of depends on what the town is using is how many filters we have online.
Thanks.
Uh, and the second part of your question, I think that we're in good shape now that we, that it's replaced. I don't think it really necessitates having like a second drain line or anything of that nature. Um, I think that is just a matter of replacing the pipe and getting it in good condition.
Is, and I may not be understanding this correctly, is there a conflict, so to speak, between the heavy trucks on the haul road? And then is this line under that in places?
It is under that, yeah. So it crosses the road, um, right underneath it.
Because it just seems like that's going to be an ongoing, or could be an ongoing threat to the line.
Yeah, in theory with a, with a, with a PVC line, it should be pretty solid now. With a clay line, you know, that was much more worrisome for sure. But I thi- I think we're in good shape now. Yeah, because what we did, as well as we put flow fill from, um, top, um, you know, after we bedded the pipe, but from the bedding of the pipe to the top is all flow fill. So that should, that should provide a lot of structural integrity.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Tim?
Uh, just a technical comment or, or two, and correct me if I go wrong there. But if you think of, of a, of a filter with filter media in it, like a tank filled with a coarse sand, you put water in the top, you draw water out the bottom. If you're filtering things out, the pores in the sand get plot-plugged and your flow rate drops off. What you have to do is you have to flush water back through the filter, backwash it. Uh, and that flushes those particulates out of the filter and then that's what is then, uh, goes, goes down to the ver- through the various systems. The upper ponds are basically settling ponds. So if you get a lot of solids with that, that you don't put those down, fill up your, your, uh, your feedwater pond with that. But, but that's essentially what, uh, what you're doing, you're dealing with, with, uh, with filters and backwashing.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Schmisher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to commend the water department. I mean, this was clearly a very emergent and urgent situation that could have had a significant negative impact, um, not only on the local businesses, but on the entire city of Canyon City. So thank you for, um, not only so clearly explaining it to us this evening and showing us the video, um, but also just your thoughtfulness and the approach and ensuring that the vendor that was selected, I mean, five hundred dollar increase per day over twenty years. I mean, the fact that you took the time to research that and make sure that it was a, a good decision, um, that it was a thoughtful decision, that you looked at the various options, that slip lining wasn't the right way to go in this, in this instance. Um, and also that you figured out ways to save money even as you were working through the situation and discovering more and more challenges and difficulties with the old line. So just thank you for your thoughtfulness and your leadership of, of the water department's response to this. Um, really appreciate the fact that we all have clean, safe drinking water. So thank you, Travis.
Excellent. All right, any other final comments? Thank you Travis, really appreciate.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you and the entire team at the water department. We are going to move now to our 2021 audit that we need to review and acceptance file.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, it has been filed and, uh, but we, we do need council to accept, uh, the audit. And, uh, you know, finance and our audit company go through, uh, pre-audit work, uh, you know, typically towards the end of, end of the audit year. And then, um, you know, beginning of this year, they, they started doing all of the, uh, audit work as, as those accounts closed and were balanced. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Tammy Nordike, our Director of Finance, and we also have Jim Hinkel here from the audit company.
I'm actually going to turn it over to Jim Hinkel.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hinkel with Hinkel &amp; Company CPAs. And thank you for allowing me to come in and spend a few minutes talking about the audit process and the results of that audit. Uh, as Mr. Stevens says, we began our audit, uh, on the early stages where we updated our understanding of the internal control structure over the accounting department. Uh, we then test those controls through sample testing of disbursements and payroll transactions. Uh, the main focus of internal controls is that we're looking to ensure that, that there is a segregation of duties. An accounting transaction takes three steps, the initiation, the approval, and then the recording. And we want to make sure there is more than one person involved in that entire process. Uh, our test of controls, our sampling testing then verifies to our standards whether or not the control features within the internal controls can be relied upon, uh, as we go through the remaining audit. Uh, that also allows us to detect whether or not there are any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business. And a material weakness is a significant deficiency that would result in a material misstatement of the financial statements as a whole. We did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal control structure. So that's the result that you want to hear. We then moved into the actual auditing of the financial statements after the books and records are closed. Excuse me, we use primarily substantive testing, which is test of details, which is pretty much exactly what it sounds like. We drill down into an account balance and we look at the underlying transactions and we verify those with supporting documentation, whether those may be cash receipts or invoices or contracts or things of that nature to determine that the account balance is reported correctly. We also use analytic review where we compare the current year's revenues and expenses to the budgets, to the prior year numbers. Uh, we look at relationships between balance sheet items such as receivables to revenues and payables to disbursements. And we're looking for events or relationships that we either did not expect or can't explain. If we find those, then we do more test of details. The end result of that is our audit opinion. Uh, it is a unmodified opinion or a clean opinion in layman's terms. If anyone happened to delve through the annual report in enough detail, you would notice that the audit report is different than it has been in the past. I assure you, it is still a clean opinion. About every twenty years, the, uh, AICPA decides that the standard auditor's opinion is not informative enough and that it needs to be rewritten and usually expanded. And in this case, it added another page. But it is a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. So that's also what you want to hear. Uh, the city did receive, uh, federal funds and expended in excess of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which requires what we refer to as a single audit. Uh, that is where you have one audit. The external auditors audit the financial statements and compliance with federal awards at the same time, as opposed to the federal government sending in auditors to audit that compliance. Uh, we audited the highway, uh, planning and construction cluster, uh, which is what we were under the uniform guidance required to do. We actually issued two audit reports or opinions on the single audit section. The first is what we refer to as in compliance with government auditing standards. And that looks at the city's internal control structure over all federal award programs and basically asks the question, is the city able to determine what federal programs it participates in and what the compliance requirements are so they can ensure compliance with those requirements? And then in addition, if we notice any non-compliance issues on any federal program through any of our audit work, we're required to communicate it in that opinion. And, and our opinion for that was, uh, for government auditing standards is that it is also an unmodified clean opinion, that the city does have the internal controls in place to determine what federal programs it participates in and what the compliance requirements are, and that we did not find any issues of non-compliance. The second one is referred to in compliance with uniform guidance. And it, it, basically it selects that specific program, the highway planning and construction cluster. And we actually test that program in detail. We look at the compliance requirement of that program from the federal point of view. We then verify compliance. We look at the disbursements underneath that program and verify that, uh, that those disbursements are in compliance. And we look at the internal control structure for that specific program. And, and that is also a unmodified, uh, uh, opinion, that the city did have the internal control structure to ensure compliance with that program. And through all of our detailed testing, we did not find any instances of non-compliance within the highway planning and construction cluster. So all three audit opinions are clean opinions or unmodified opinions. And we did not have any findings to report within the audit report or within orally to you all. Uh, the other item that might be of note is if you really looked at the, uh, annual report closely enough, you might have noticed that the name changed just ever so slightly. It used to be the comprehensive annual financial report. Now it is the annual comprehensive annual report. And the, the reason for that is that the acronym under the old name was deemed to be a derogatory term in some parts of the world. And so the GFOA decided to, uh, change those, those around. So the acronym would be ACFER now, uh, which is deemed to be more appropriate. So that, that is a, not a typo, but that was an intentional change. Finally, we, uh, also issued a required communications letter. We are required to communicate in writing if certain events occur, uh, and we have nothing to report. We did not have any difficulties during the process of the audit. We did not have any disagreements with management during, or regarding accounting transactions or accounting policies. We did not have any adjustments or audit adjustments that were made to the books and records. And we did not have any uncorrected adjustments, errors that we have found that were not material enough to make, uh, to the financial statements. So we did not have any of those either. And, and finally, kind of an unusual one, we are not aware of any contact with other auditors. And that goes back to the old opinion shopping days where if we disagreed with management on an accounting policy or procedure, then they would just go interview other firms until they found one that agreed with them and they would hire them. And we're required to report if we have any indication of that, and we're not. So all in all, uh, it was a good, clean audit. And, uh, it is a rather large, uh, annual report that goes together with a lot of good information. But, uh, we are, we consider ourselves as an addition to Tammy and her staff's regular day-to-day work. Uh, and, uh, we appreciate all of the effort that was put forth to answer our questions, provide our information that we needed. And that brings me probably to the final thing that I think is probably most important for you all to hear. And that is throughout the audit process, we as the external auditors felt like we had open transparency through the process. Everything that we asked for, we were provided in a timely fashion. We were never denied any information. And we felt like we were able to ask for and receive whatever we needed in order to perform our professional standards, uh, as required for us. So I think that's very important for the, uh, for the council to hear, uh, that we had that transparency. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer them. Um, and again, thank you Tammy and your staff. Uh, I know they worked real hard to help, uh, to get to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkel. Tammy, do you have anything you'd like to add about the audit?
I'm just happy we're going to be only working in two years versus three. So that's a big thing. But, um, thank you for, um, to all of my staff. Um, they worked extremely hard getting, getting this together. And then along with Jim and his staff to make sure that we, we got this out. And we have submitted everything, um, to the state, to, um, the single audit clearinghouse.
The single audit, yes, clearinghouse.
Clearinghouse and then, um, GFOA. So everything has, has been submitted. So we're, we're good there.
Well, thank you for your transparency and your cooperation and freely giving anything and all information and just, I mean, let the public know that this information, this audit is made available to the public and that it is an independent audit from a neutral company that's outside of our purview. And really gained an, an extra appreciation, it just so happens that my dad just got appointed to be on city council in Texas. So the apple and the tree are getting kind of closer together these days. And, um, their city's auditor was done by somebody in-house. No transparency, no cooperation with getting the documents asked for by the city council. And so it happens a lot and that, but that's not happening here in Canyon City. And it, this document is very important to us that we are above and beyond board and that we're doing the right thing. And that's verified by independent agencies. So we appreciate that. Councilmember Smith?
Um, I just, first of all, I just wanted to commend Tammy and her entire department. Uh, my wife is currently an internal auditor, but she's also worked in external auditing. So I know firsthand how much work actually goes into this and, and, uh, the nights, you know, where you're away from your family because you have to work late and those things I definitely understand. So thank you guys so much for your hard work.
Councilmember Tracy?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I do want to say, in addition to thanks to both of you, that, that really the financial, the annual, I probably won't say the title right, the annual comprehensive financial report is really an excellent document. And so I just want to say that it's, uh, I found it really helpful reading that from a council member's point of view, but it really is very readable and the contextual information. I think more people in the community who read this, I think the, the better it would be. I did have three specific questions that I submitted earlier by email to Tammy and to Ryan and that were answered by email. I think, uh, the city council was copied on that. And I don't have anything further. And my first question was just in regard to what portion of city funds is in interest-bearing accounts? How's that decided? Um, but I didn't know if you, either of you had more you wanted to say about either that question or my question about the 2017 loan from multiple funds to the street improvement fund? And then are just a real concrete question in terms of, uh, the categories in the sales tax, uh, list that what all utilities were included in the utility service category? So if you had more you wanted to say about that or if there's other questions about that, I don't have any.
Going back to your first question regarding the interest-bearing accounts, all of the excess funds that the city has are in accounts that earn interest. So we have our main account with our bank and then we have two other, actually we have three other accounts with two of the local government pools. Um, all of that is liquid. Um, we did not, we have not invested in CDs or anything like that in a number of years. Part of that was just because the way that the interest rates have, have been and it didn't benefit, it wouldn't necessarily have increased our yield, it, you know, to have us, have us do that. Um, right now, interest rates are going up, so we are seeing increased interest earnings. Um, we will be looking in the future to try to help earn more interest for the city. And that would be, that would involve, um, first of all, updating our investment policy to make sure we're in compliance with, um, any changes that have been made. And then making, making other investments that are, uh, that we can legally do. And as far as our sales tax category, the question was what was included in the utility sales tax category? And that was our telephone, electric, gas, propane, internet. Um, and then when Tarla and I were discussing is there's some little random ones. You know, we get sales tax from, you know, streaming services. So it's like, okay, that's either going to go under, um, internet or telephone depending on, on what they are. So those were the primary, those were the primary ones for the, um, utilities. the primary, those were the primary ones for the utilities. And I'll let Ryan discuss the loans.
Yeah, so regarding 2A, when 2A was originally passed in 2016, in 2017, a decision was made, or, you know, leading up to 2017, there was a decision made to do interdepartment loans so that road construction could start sooner, rather than waiting for the tax collections to come in. So there were some interdepartment loans that were entered into over the period of the 2A term, which is 10 years. And I think the other part of that, I wasn't the administrator at the time, but I believe part of that was because those funds were currently not earning a whole bunch as far as interest goes. You know, there may be a little bit of opportunity for a little bit of interest gain as well through an interdepartment loan.
Thanks.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Good evening. I've looked at this, but one thing I am just kind of curious is, why the extension on to get this done, completed, filed?
Take that, you want to take that?
I mean, I'm very familiar with financial background and all this. So that's all. I was kind of curious, why the extension?
I think the biggest reason from our perspective is that there was some turnover within the accounting department. Rebecca, am I saying that right, who had performed most of the pre-audit work in providing documents, had left, and the responsibility then fell on some new folks that were learning as they went. And I think that was probably the most of the reason why it took longer to get closed up this year than the previous years.
Okay.
And if you'd like to add anything to that?
And we did have, we're also making sure that when we looked through this document, that we corrected any grammar, because we wanted to make sure that it came across as a more professional document as well. So we had changes like that. We also made sure that any ordinances that had been referenced, if they had been modified, that that was updated. We had some things that were in there that had changed two, three, five years ago, and they hadn't been changed. So we went through it as the staff, more so with a fine-tooth comb. And we made sure that all of our numbers were tying out with the auditor. And if we had questions on groupings, that's how we take, we have our numbers grouped, whether it's revenue or expenditures, and how they had them, where those numbers were coming from. So sometimes we would go back and forth on how they came up with a number so we could all be on the same page. The numbers didn't change, it was just where they were coming from. And sometimes there would have been a change either on our side or their side. But it was just how things were grouped.
And I think that with those changes and the new staff that are in place, we'll be back to the July 31 filing, prior to the July 31 filing in the future.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Hamrick?
I just wanted to make a comment about the interdepartment loans. That at the time that 2A was passed, and we were looking at how to jumpstart the program, this was a subject that was discussed with the city administrator at the time, and all of council, in full transparency and out in view of the public. And it was a decision taken, endorsed by council to do these loans, to get us started, so that we could show some progress pretty quick. And I think, all in all, time has proven that it's been a good decision. We've got a lot of work done every year. We are looking at the issues that this does, having funds available to do the work does, because there are other things that are not funded by 2A that also have to be paid for when you dig up a street. And so those can be work to slow you down a little bit. But the decision for the interdepartmental loans was, you know, made collaboratively and in full public view.
We actually went to some public, a couple of public forums, and got some feedback from them too, before we came to that decision, if I remember correctly. If there isn't any further discussion, we would like to take a motion to approve this audit. Ryan, did you have something?
The motion would be to accept the audit.
Accept. Well, it's not even filed, but technically, it's accepted. Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the 2021 annual audit report and file the report.
Second.
Second.
Lots of seconds. I'll let you choose.
I heard Brandon first, he got it.
Any further discussion? A call vote?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
B. Smith?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkel and your company. Tammy, thank you and your team as well. I know this takes a lot of work every year. Really appreciate you all. And thank you, council. And Ryan and Austin, thanks for making your way down here. Appreciate it. With that, this meeting is adjourned.